Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for September 14th, 2021. We are once again under guidelines for anyone in attendance in this room to properly wear a mask whether they have received vaccinations or not. I encourage everyone to obtain accurate information on the readily available vaccines that have been proven to be safe and effective so we can resume normal activities. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order. The meeting has been properly agendized and all members of council are present in chambers this evening. We'll begin with an invocation from Pastor Kurt Hedlund with Bethany Baptist Church. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let's join together in prayer. Heavenly Father, we are indeed thankful for the blessings we enjoy as residents of this community. We're thankful for the physical resources, the land and the sun, and more importantly, the human resources. We're thankful for the volunteers, for the public servants represented here. We realize that it's still a challenging environment given the coronavirus and we need wisdom in navigating through that. We think especially of our public school system asking that you would protect our students and our staff from the ravages of this disease, and we pray especially that our young people might have a somewhat more normal year of schooling. We pray too that you would give a spirit of civility and wisdom as we realize there are strong opinions and masks and vaccines and anti-vaxers and anti-maskers, and we pray that same spirit of civility and grace would permeate the meeting tonight, that there would be collective wisdom in this group as it deals with the issues before us. So give us wisdom and we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again Pastor Hedlund.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, did we have any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. We'll begin then with our initial public comment period. As stated in the posted agenda for this meeting, public comment may have been submitted via email prior to the meeting. We will also have the opportunity for anyone wishing to call in to also do so. Public comment during this initial comment period is limited to matters for action on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak during public comment periods will have up to five minutes. As always, we ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak in the initial public comment period? Come forward sir and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Julian Scholl, member of the Las Vegas Astronomical Society and the Greater Hartford Astronomical Society. I'm a Boulder City resident since 2011, and I have given my passion is amateur astronomy. I'd like to salute this group's efforts to try to preserve our dark skies as a resource that you don't see in a lot of places anymore. I know sometimes it's difficult, we think it costs money, of course it does, but I think the reward will pay off. I have given star parties to the elementary school here in town, I've set up with friends at the public library to see the transit of Mercury across the sun, and a number of other events. Most of my workforce probably has been with the astronomy club in Las Vegas and those surrounding areas. But I'd like to see more of that done in Boulder City. As we improve our dark skies, I'd like to invite everybody out to a star party, and I know a place. The Bootleg Canyon Park is a beautiful place to have a star party. Just need the right permissions, get the right people, I'm sure you guys can get that permission, and we can invite your families and maybe even the public out. I'm sure I can get some of my colleagues in Las Vegas to join us. There's only two or three amateur astronomers in town that I know of, and probably many more that I don't, but we'll certainly chase them out of the woods. So thank you so much for what you're doing. I look forward to seeing our improvements and offer my assistance in any way that I can help.
Thank you. Ms. Davenport, again please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Blair Davenport. I'm a Boulder City resident and a member of the city's Historic Preservation Committee. Regarding Consent Agenda Number Seven, the RDA grant request for 524 Nevada Way, the argument that an owner can do anything that they want to their building or their property as stated by one of the council members this evening at the RDA meeting is not justification for permanently destroying the integrity of an historic building. Based on that argument, it appears this council would approve all kinds of incompatible changes to our historic resources, and these changes are not what the community desires based on past work with the community and outreach to the community when it comes to preserving Boulder City's history. On a more positive note however, I'm also here regarding Agenda Item Number 12, matters pertaining to, related to the night sky lighting and outdoor lighting standards. I look forward to hearing from my National Park Service colleague, Ashley Pipkin, and would like to offer to City Council the support of the Historic Preservation Committee in helping the city establish lighting standards that improve evening visibility of our streets and night sky. Specifically, the Historic Preservation Committee can help develop guidelines that provide a consistent approach to lighting in our historic district that helps preserve our distinct identity at night and during the day, is compatible with our historic buildings and district, minimizes glare and light trespass, supports the use of fixtures and lamps that cast warm rather than cold or cool light, is appealing to the eye, and complements retail display and nighttime activities. As an example, one of the first buildings that could benefit from this approach is City Hall. As you leave the building tonight, please notice, but try not to become blinded, how the front entrance is overly illuminated with a pair of blinding mercury vapor lights that are historically inappropriate in design and inconsistent with night sky standards. The Historic Preservation Committee can assist in recommending period light fixtures to replace those lights, and we can suggest where to add other lighting as needed that is night sky friendly, improves the appearance of the historic building, are energy efficient, and provides required safety and security for the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane, I have a number of items I just want to comment on. Item 11, the spending of the recovery funds, until we hear the presentation and whatever, we don't really know what kinds of projects we could include, but I would like to know if some of the funds could go towards the pool either as capital improvements or infrastructure Item 12, the dark skies, I'm very much looking forward to hearing the presentation. It was a item that Mr. Harhey, Councilman Harhey, talked about a lot and at his, you know, when the subject came up at coffee with the councilman on Saturday, so I would be very much interested in hearing the discussion on it and what we can do about it. The battalion chief, I'm not arguing, reserve battalion chief, I'm not arguing that we don't need one or not to get one, but I do think it's another, the fact that we have to go out and, you know, get someone who lives here locally so they can make that eight-minute timeframe. I think it's another reason why when we hire somebody for a position, especially when we create a position, which we did for when the council approved the Assistant Fire Chief position a few months back, that it should be required that they live within the city so we don't have this problem, because the purpose for the Assistant Fire Chief was to be available when the regular, when the fire chief was not, and that apparently doesn't count if the person lives out of the community. So that's just a comment, nothing can be done about it now, to say the least. And I believe that's my list of items for tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else present? Ms. Legan?
Good evening, I am Jill Legan and I'm here with the Boulder City Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Ashley Pipkin for giving her presentation in advance. I am grateful for her efforts. She is a lovely young lady and I am really looking forward to being able to work with her more. We very much appreciate dark skies and astro tourism opportunities, and I think what she has already put into place and that of what the state has as well with the certification program that was just implemented this last legislative session, I think it's important for us throughout the entire state to pay attention and to protect and promote our beautiful dark skies opportunity, and so I'm excited for Ashley and very much in support of her programs. I also wanted to state that we just came from the listening program that the State Treasurer's Office put into place. We had some great ideas. I know that they will be making a presentation here shortly, and I would like to throw out maybe the possibility for everybody to get on Nevada Recovers, put in your survey ideas, because there's a lot of great ideas in this community, and the more that we're heard, the more Boulder City will get paid attention to, but also maybe the possibility of considering use of some of those state funds for the dark skies program. So thank you very much, we sure appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? All right, we will then go to anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. This is our initial public comment period.
Yes, my name is Mark Wells and my wife and I live at, we're residents living at 108 Topsail here in Boulder City. We're calling in favor of and support of bill number 1907, approving agreement number 21-14, or 1943, which is a sales agreement, a land sales agreement of approximately 3,600 square feet of land adjacent to 383 Claremont Street, which is the property that my wife and I own. Again, we're in favor of this, we are grateful for the opportunity to purchase it from the city and appreciate that opportunity. We are standing by at home, if there are questions, we're happy to answer them. Again, Mark Wells and Anell Wells, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Yes, hi. My name is Anthony Frites, I'm a resident of seven months in Boulder City, and I would like to just show my support for the Dark Skies Initiative here in Boulder City. As a member of the Historic Preservation Council stated earlier, I feel we can do a lot better in this historic district by using warmer light temperatures instead of some of the cool white lights that we have in place around town, and I'd like to just give my full support to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to call in, the phone Again, this is our initial public comment period, anyone wishing to speak on an item Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments submitted via email?
Yes, I have a few.
Please go ahead.
The first one is from Keith Casares, dear Boulder City residents and council, I'm the current president of the Las Vegas Astronomical Society, an organization of amateur astronomers formed to promote amateur astronomy in Southern Nevada. The society was established in July 1980 and is organized as a Nevada nonprofit corporation and federal 501(c)(3) educational public charity operating in association with the College of Southern Nevada Planetarium. Our mission is to share our love of the night sky and promote astronomy, science education through free public outreach events at federal and state parks as well as schools throughout Southern Nevada. We also work to educate the public about light pollution and its negative effects on astronomical observation. Our organization has led many astronomical events in nearby Lake Mead National Recreation Area, and we have many members who live in Boulder City and enjoy, and enjoy looking at the night sky. I write today on behalf of the Las Vegas Astronomical Society in support of the use of night sky friendly lighting to maintain the history of and preserve natural night skies in Boulder City. We strongly support these objectives and efforts to address any actions which threaten the character of this important historical city and the ability of all its inhabitants and visitors to enjoy star-filled natural night skies. We look forward to engaging with you in preserving Boulder City's important cultural history and ambiance. Please let us know if we can support your efforts in any way. Next is a letter from Randolph Lavasser, Acting Superintendent at Lake Mead National Recreation Center. Dear Boulder City Council members, the National Park Service and Lake Mead National Recreation Area would like to express our excitement for Boulder City's potential adoption of night sky friendly practices and the installation of night sky friendly lighting. LMNRA also fully supports Boulder City seeking dark sky designation through the state of Nevada. Southern Nevada has long been considered by many night sky enthusiasts to be one of the best places in America to stargaze, and Boulder City is uniquely positioned as a gateway community adjacent to LMNRA to benefit from the incredible night skies and visitors they attract. With the nearly 1.5 million acres of LMNRA, visitors can experience the same dark skies that have fascinated and inspired human beings since the beginning of time. The protection of dark skies is a priority of LMNRA not only for the enjoyment of stargazing visitors, but for the natural environment as well. Nocturnal wildlife relies on darkness for survival, and the natural rhythms of humans and plants depend on unaltered night sky. LMNRA is committed to working towards improving the night sky conditions with the parks as well, and will begin transitioning to night sky friendly lighting this year. Through our commitment to reducing light pollution and ongoing public outreach, we hope to seek certification as an international dark sky park by the International Dark Sky Association within the next five years. By receiving this designation, LMNRA would become one of the best places in the country to experience and enjoy natural darkness. Working with gateway communities like Boulder City to improve night sky lighting aligns with the National Park Service's mission of protecting natural and cultural resources and values for the enjoyment, education, and inspiration of this and future generations. Having natural nightlight skies affords residents and park visitors a natural and healthy environment and the ability to protect wildlife and plants that rely on the natural cues of nighttime to thrive on these landscape. Lake Mead is currently undergoing similar efforts to improve the night sky in the park and will work with Ashley Pipkin and others in the Night Skies Division of the National Park Service to rely on their expertise in this realm. Next is Kevin Swartz and Jonathan Barini, IDA advocates. Dear members of the Boulder City Council, as advocates in the state of Nevada for the International Dark Skies Association, IDA, a 501(c)(3) US-based nonprofit organization, we are writing to express our enthusiastic support for the designation of Boulder City as dark sky community. Such classification will cement Boulder City as a municipality dedicated to maintaining the quality of life of its citizens, preserving the beauty and aesthetics of its surroundings, and providing an example to towns and cities nationwide on responsible and forward-thinking public policy. In addition, Boulder City's deep connection with American history through Hoover Dam sets it apart as an important, important cultural and historic location. Hoover Dam itself has several astronomical features in its style and design. Therefore, we believe obtaining and maintaining dark sky status would be in keeping with Boulder City's past and serve it well into the future. Next public comment is from Jay Piper. I hope that Boulder City will pursue a night sky friendly lighting ordinance and might further pursue a dark sky designation from the International Dark Sky Association headquartered in Tucson, Arizona. My support for this topic is based on decades of backyard amateur astronomy and astronomy public outreach at locations from national parks to local schools. This might be dismissed as a green topic, but it really is common sense. We can be more attentive to how light is directed downward from a fully shielded or full cutoff fixture is better than an outward and upward from an unshielded fixture. Better lighting helps security. Downward lighting on a building or sign creates less glare and shadows than outward or upward directed lighting. The good guys can better see what is going on with less glare, and the bad guys have fewer shadows to hide in. Streetlights that are more shielded improve safety on the neighborhood streets by creating less glare for drivers and pedestrians alike. Better nighttime lighting removes a distraction and concern for people indoors. Poorly shielded outdoor lighting can enter windows to interfere with sleep. I had to put a blackout curtain in a kid's bedroom because of a bright replacement streetlight interfered with sleep on school nights. Our night and day rhythm is disrupted by excess nighttime light which can contribute to various health problems. Wildlife is also disrupted by misdirected nighttime lighting. Our bighorn herd is an important tourism attraction. Both the daytime wildlife that bed down or roost at night and the evening bats, nighthawks, owls, etc. add to the enjoyment of living here. A better view of the stars is another reason for families to move here. It adds to what visitors can see from downtown. A vivid night sky helps encourage kids to learn about sky and math, navigation, history, and myth. Ultimately, a night sky designation could be promoted by the Chamber of Commerce as another reason to visit Boulder City. Even now, a 15 to 30 minute drive into the Lake Mead Recreation Area offers sweeping views of the Milky Way and faint stars invisible from big city skies as an added reason for tourists to visit. We can protect the truly dark skies of Lake Mead and benefit as a gateway city and improve the night sky views from within Boulder City. Keeping Boulder City clean, green, and more starry sky can be both a public and private effort. I hope we enact a night sky lighting ordinance and begin to replace the oldest unshielded streetlights with better fixtures. I also hope that private developments, for example, the St. Jude's Expansion, install night sky friendly lighting. Next is Kevin Swartz, who says we support Boulder City becoming a dark sky community, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who submitted public comment. Anyone here again that would like to make public comment before we close the period? All right, we will then close the initial public comment period, move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
Changes.
Mr. City Manager?
I would recommend removal of item six from the consent agenda as that item was not considered.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney? Okay. Counsel, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to approve the regular agenda with the removal of item number six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approval of the consent agenda, again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
And by the way, I should point out that David O. is substituting as our city attorney this evening. Counsel, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that will then bring us to item number 11, presentation by the State Treasurer's It sounds like you've already had a long day.
We have, but it's been really great, so. All right. Good evening, Counsel, my name is Kirsten Van Rye for the record. I serve as the Chief of Staff for the State Treasurer's Office down in Las Vegas. Thank you so much for having us this evening. The Treasurer unfortunately couldn't attend, so I'm here in his place and I'll try to do a good job, but we'll see. So we're here this evening to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed by Congress back in March of this year, and that is HR 1319, and it was signed by President Biden on March 11th, and that package includes, I think it's 1.9 trillion, but we rounded up to two, so about $2 trillion in aid across hundreds of separate programs, and as of the date of this PowerPoint, we have known funding for the state of Nevada for 67 out of 105 of those programs, and I guess to back up, I apologize, the state of Nevada is expecting to receive somewhere around $6.7 billion under the American Rescue Plan Act, and that includes things, as you'll see on the screen here, that bottom bucket is the state general aid, and that's the most flexible dollars in coordination with local general aid, and that local aid is about 1.04 billion, state general aid is just about 2.74 billion, and then all the other programs up on top that you see, those make up those other 103 buckets that we know about at this stage, and that is kind of the remaining four-ish billion dollars, and that doesn't include things like the stimulus payments that went direct to residents, the expansion of the child tax care credits, those types of kind of direct aid to residents. So moving on, within the American Rescue Plan Act, there's kind of three types as we like to think about. we like to think about it, of aid. There's buckets that are non-discretionary, so the funding is for very specific purposes, and those are for new and/or existing programs. For instance, the UI extension implementation, you know, we don't have any discretion as a state or as a local government on how those dollars are spent. Then there's the quasi-discretionary aid, and that is funding to new and existing programs for which the, we have some discretion, so that's things like grants and aid to airport and our rental assistance dollars. Finally, and this is the most flexible, that's the discretionary aid, and that is funding to existing or new programs for which the recipient has discretion in how funds can be spent. And as indicated, this is the state and local aid buckets, and also the capital projects bucket that we know is coming, but we don't quite have guidance yet from the Treasury. So when the American Rescue Plan Act was passed back in March, our office worked closely with legislative leadership and Governor's Office to establish the Every Nevada Recovery Framework, and that serves as a basis for the state's plan on spending and investing the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And within the Every Nevada Recovery Framework, we set four bands of prioritization. So in spending and investing these dollars, we want to start with making sure that Nevadans' basic needs are taken care of first. And once that's, those needs are met, then we'll move on to strengthening our communities, making sure folks have access to, you know, quality healthcare, that sort of thing. And then we'll move on to economy, making sure our small businesses are stable, from their quality of life, opportunities for recreation, things like that. And within the Every Nevada Recovery Framework, in addition to the four bands of prioritization, we also have the seven priorities for strategic enhancement, and I won't go through them all, but you can see them listed here, and those are kind of the broad buckets of how we'll categorize the funding and how we choose to spend the dollars and invest the dollars. And so that brings us to today, and what we're here actually really to talk about, and that's our statewide listening tour. So the Treasurer's Office, Governor's Office, legislative leadership, we know that Nevadans have been hit hard by that pandemic, so we want to hear from Nevadans. So our office undertook with the Governor's Office and legislative leadership a statewide listening tour, 75 events, 75 days. I think we're on day 40-ish, and this is our, I think, 68th event, so we will blow right past 75 events. But we have been to Eureka, Elko, Wenomaca, Wells, we were out in Laughlin earlier today. We are really traveling the state and trying to collect as much impact or input as we possibly can to see how Nevadans were affected by the pandemic and how best, you know, the state could possibly spend the dollars to aid in their recovery. So that's step one of the process. Step two of the process in this will start up after we collect all the input from the listening tour. We will hire on another vendor to create basically a comprehensive roadmap with the recommendations on how the state can best, you know, allocate not only the flexible dollars, but if we get a really great idea for childcare, we don't necessarily need to dip into the flexible aid dollars. We can use the, I think it's $335 million that the state's expected to receive under, you know, specific childcare funding buckets. So that will be step two of the process, and we anticipate that to take another maybe 75, 150 days roughly. And then step three, after finalizing the roadmap, the legislature obviously will take the roadmap for consideration, make their changes, et cetera, and then the state will actually move to implementing and designing these new programs. So moving on to the why of the listening tour, it'll inform spending priorities by hearing directly from those who have been hit hardest, as I mentioned. It also allows local governments and the state to coordinate, so we're not duplicating efforts, and instead ensures that all the dollars that everybody gets in, regardless of state dollars, local dollars, we want to make sure that they're coordinated and that each dollar is maximized. And finally, it provides an opportunity to capture ideas and issues that may be ineligible under the guidance for a specific program under the American Rescue Plan Act, but may, you know, in the future be eligible for a DEMPRE program, so we've captured kind of ideas at the outset. So moving on to the why we're here tonight specifically, we want input from residents, we want input from everybody we can think of. Tell your friends, tell your family, tell us how you were affected by the pandemic, how you would use these dollars to fix whatever issues may have arisen during the pandemic. So on the presentation here, we have the link to our website, nevadarecoverers.com. You can fill out a survey there, very brief survey. You can also submit a specific ideas. It'll ask for some contact information, because we want to make sure we capture every idea and we have it somewhere backed up, so we're not, you know, taking notes down in a public meeting, and then we lose, you know, we lose our notes or something, and then we've suddenly lost the idea. So we're encouraging everybody to please visit nevadarecoverers.com, submit your thoughts, input, feedback, we love it. One thing to remember is please don't self-censor. The rules for the guidance, as they're established now under the state and local aid bucket, changes, and right now we only have an interim final rule, so we'll have a final, final rule at some, set at some stage as well. So please just tell us what you need, regardless of whether you think it may or may not fit under this funding program. And then finally, share the message, friends, families, neighbors, someone you run into at the airport. And then finally, if there's any questions, we're more than happy to help, and I think that's about it, and I will try my very best to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again.
Thank you. Again, I do appreciate you taking the time. It sounds like you've had a good view of Nevada over the past couple of weeks here. Questions or comments from Counsel? Counselmember Adams?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, very much appreciated. I did have some questions, and looking at the known funding right now at that chart, you know, one of the things that struck me was something like transportation is getting such a small sliver of the pie, and yet, you know, transportation is definitely one of those things that has affected, you know, those who have been affected hardest, have been hit hardest by this pandemic. You know, it's, transportation already, it kind of is, has issues with funding as it is. And so, you know, I guess I'm just curious why that's so low, especially considering, you know, and looking at the bands of prioritization, Nevadans' basic needs, transportation is essential to, whether it's to make sure you're getting to your job on time to get to school, education, people need that. Another thing right here, you know, under the priorities for strategic enhancement, you know, it's at least, you know, the top five, increasing access to healthcare and community-based services. You know, I serve on the Board of Health for the Health District of Southern Nevada, and one of the things that we were talking about with access to healthcare is a lot of times people just assume that access to healthcare is whether or not you have insurance or not, but a lot of people actually forget that physically having access to the services being provided, actually being able to go and get there, is incredibly important. And so it's concerning to me to see such a small sliver for transportation. As the pandemic has affected me personally and those that I work with, common, you know, often are used to in the past, I guess I should say, I'm a performer, musician, entertainer, that's been my career up until recently, and the, there just hasn't been work available. And what work is becoming available is far and few between compared to what it was in a state or area like Las Vegas. And many of the people that I know had incredible amounts of difficulty getting through, getting their unemployment, getting, you know, accepted for the UI benefits that were given, that they usually wouldn't have access to, the individual employees. And, you know, it's not just the arts and entertainment people, there's so many people are now doing gig work that, in which they wouldn't normally be able to receive unemployment. Is there any consideration for extending that type of program or anything? Because we're not out of this, and then those are, remain, you know, still be, they remain some of the most affected people in this current environment that we talk about when we talk about economic development.
Yeah, definitely. So to address your first question regarding the transportation, so I, this is just the snapshot in time of the known kind of funding that will be funneled through to Nevada from the American Rescue Plan Act. So this may grow in the future, and if there's more need or more demand for a transportation program that's not necessarily afforded by a direct bucket under the American Rescue Plan Act, you know, the state could certainly consider, or local governments as well, certainly consider, you know, spending some more of those flexible aid dollars towards transportation projects. So definitely just wanted to add that point there. And then to the second point, I'm not aware, I guess I'm not as knowledgeable as, to the kind of UI stuff, I know the legislature prioritized the rebuilding of the UI system during the legislative session, because, you know, like, nobody had to do a listening tour to know that the UI system, you know, didn't work as well as we probably would have hoped, you know, for the residents of the state, so.
And then I guess just while I'm here, I'll also just, with the same, along the same lines of transportation being needed, is also healthcare funding. If, you know, the whole reason we're here is because of a pandemic, and when we're looking at, you know, healthcare funding, it should really be a priority, I think, also. And it's, you know, looking at the chart, it doesn't seem to be, so those are, those are my thoughts.
Got it. No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just offer one thing. My prior service on regional transportation, you know, a big problem with these programs is there are so many of them. RTC received tens of millions of dollars in funding separate from this program, so there are dollars out there that went directly to certain types of agencies and are not coming through the state in this format. I believe that's the same with healthcare. I believe there's a separate bucket, tranche, whatever term wants to be used, but there are dollars out there for those other things, and I think that's going to be a challenge, too, is for everyone to understand all of these different sources of funding, so that as we look at projects and say, well, we should use money for this, and we need to be sure that, well, okay, there's another program that would actually apply more specifically to a certain need. Is that?
Yes, absolutely. So that's actually, that kind of coordination, working with agencies that are receiving funds directly, such as the RTC, that will be, and kind of making sure the buckets that we're pooling money from are the kind of highest use of that money. That will be the main task of that second vendor in kind of plotting out that roadmap and creating that comprehensive document for presentation to legislature, because, yeah, you're totally right.
You know, I know one question that's been asked of me is, we're contemplating replacing our municipal swimming pool here in Boulder City, that type of thing, would infrastructure money be available for that type of project?
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head if that may fit or may not fit. I know, like I mentioned at the beginning, we haven't received guidance from the Treasury yet regarding kind of like the, the use of the infrastructure funds, so I think that's something that, you know, maybe, maybe not.
Okay. Another project here in Boulder City is the Southern Nevada Railroad Museum Expansion, which again, you know, there is money currently in the state budget for that, but with this funding, you know, can projects like that be accelerated or considered?
Yeah, and that was actually something that came up during our previous event just a few minutes ago, and that's something we're looking into. I know there's a couple different buckets, I think, under ARPA that allow for, you know, like tourism projects, that sort of thing, so we'll definitely look into that, and I would encourage, again, nevadarecoverers.com, if there are any, you know, specific needs, that sort of thing, please submit a form, so we have it, you know, like captured somewhere.
And how long is this funding going to be available? We have a significant amount of money here, and can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so the funds are, they must be allocated by December 31, 2024, and they must be spent by December 31, 2026, so we have a little bit of time. That's why we, you know, it's a, it's once-in-a-lifetime amount of money, so we really are trying to be deliberate and thoughtful in the process of making sure we get it right.
Yeah, absolutely. We want this money to count, to contribute to jobs and all that. I would just like to say, I have looked at the nevadarecoverers.com website. I would encourage people to go look at that. There's already a number of project ideas that are out there, but certainly it's a place for people to also have their input.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselmember Bridges?
Yeah, it's like being asked to set up a Christmas wish list, you know, and I'm curious, I've had experience of funding being available through a grant, through a nonprofit, but the grant, but the nonprofit is not allowed to administer the grant. The grant has to go, say, through the county. When the person goes to apply to the county to get the grant funding, they're number And I know a lot of this money is for plans, programs, items, things. I'm just curious how much or what's being thought about in terms of the backroom stuff, the technology, the structure, because I think my, you know, I look at this and I say, this is well and wonderful, but are there enough computer people, are there enough customer service agents, is there enough technology structure behind it to create a seamless distribution of these funds? Because we're in a situation, for example, with those, that funding, we don't even know who's applied from Boulder City, that, we have no interaction with that. So I'm thinking, gosh, you know, that's just some hundreds of thousands, and now we're talking millions, and is, and also in terms of transparency of where it's going and avoiding fraud and things like that. So I'm just curious what, what's been discussed on those issues.
Yeah, totally. So from, and a lot of those kind of more granular, detailed level discussions will happen in the program design phase, which is that step two of the process, but it's definitely at top of our minds, you know, capacity to actually administer the programs. It's, it doesn't help anybody if we have a program for a million people and there's one person working it, right? Like, it's just, it's going to break. So yes, totally, totally agree, it's definitely at the top of our minds, and I think it'll be a fundamental part of the program design to make sure, you know, if we do a program, it doesn't, it doesn't break.
Okay, my second question has to do with sustainability. Is there a way, I know, anything that I personally would want to see would have to be looked at in terms of environment, environmental impact, and, and social equity, and issues like that, that oftentimes it ends up in the hands of the people who don't need it as much? Or, you know, are we looking at building more roadways so we can have more cars on the road as opposed to looking at light rail, for example, or ways to get around that don't require vehicles?
Yeah, so that's why I think kind of one of the main tenants of the listening tour is really trying to meet people in the community as to where they are. So the feedback that we collect, kind of, that will guide the decision-making process as far as the roadmap goes, so as far as social equity, those types of things. It'll be completely transparent, like I said, fill out a form, nevadarecoverers.com, all that's public record, so we know where the ideas are coming from. It wasn't made in a back room with, you know, three people sitting somewhere. It, you know, it's, it's an open discussion with the residents of the state, so definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just like to mention, too, that with all of this funding, the city is separately receiving funding. So again, this is going to be a challenge for all of us to get input from the public, identify the projects, identify where the funding for that project is, and then get started, because I think the biggest thing is getting started.
Yeah.
We do have a little bit more time as far as submitting our plans, but not much time, but I know our city staff is already hard at work at that, but we absolutely want to hear from the community, not just for the state funding, but for our local funding as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Thank you guys so much for having us.
And enjoy the rest of your evening. I hope you're on your way home. All right, item number 12, matters related to the Night Sky Project.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Taylor Tetter, your City Manager here, this item was requested by Councilmember Adams, and before I turn that over to him, I wanted to just go over the two items of action that are requested of you this evening. The first is to hear the presentation by Ms. Ashley Pipkin of the National Park Service, and then to discuss the outdoor lighting standards for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, would you like to make the introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For a number of years, even prior to my election, I have heard concerns from a number of people over the brightness of the new LED lights that have been put in. Having lived in Flagstaff, Arizona, myself, for a few years, I actually was, am fairly familiar with the idea of night sky ordinances that enhance not only the visibility of the stars above us, but also the visibility of the streets we're walking on at night. That's why I have asked Ashley Pipkin here to give a presentation on the benefits of night sky lighting, and to give us, as a council, to ask some questions, if we have any questions that we might have of her. And then after the presentation, it's my hope that we, as a council, can deliberate it's my hope that we, as a council, can deliberate and discuss and maybe provide some direction to staff as to what kind of lighting standards we would like to see here in our community and how we might accomplish those goals. Without anything else, I'd like to introduce Ashley Pipkin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Pipkin. And I would first like to thank city council and of course, the community of Boulder City for giving me an opportunity to speak with you tonight on two things that I really care a lot about, my community Boulder City and night sky friendly lighting. I have lived in Boulder City for nine years, and I also work for the National Park Service. I study natural nighttime landscapes. And so I want to tell you a little bit about my job so you know where I'm coming from. I think it'll make a little bit more sense throughout the presentation, if you know that. My job involves a lot, but one of the things I do is measure night sky quality in our national parks and try to make improvements that will provide visitors with a sense of enjoyment and inspiration when they look up at the night sky. So I take this camera out, as you can see, and I collect multiple images of the night sky. Each dot is a picture. And when we stitch those pictures together and put false color over them, we get something that looks like this. This is all sky image that was collected in the park. This is part of my job. And you can see in this image, the Milky Way, but you can also see some light domes from Searchlight, the Greater Las Vegas area, Kingman, and Laughlin. Those light domes degrade night sky quality. All of these light domes come from artificial light at night, and much of the light can be attributed to light pollution in the form of sky glow. In this image, you can see how sky glow drowns out the stars on the horizon. For national parks, sky glow is the biggest threat. But for communities, light pollution from bright streetlights like this one are the biggest issue. These lights shine into your window or backyard at night and disturb your evening stroll throughout the community. Light pollution is not synonymous with outdoor light. It only applies to outdoor light that is excessive, misdirected, or obtrusive. And it's not only impacting Boulder City, but it's an issue across the US. And we can look to the past to understand what we've lost. In the 1950s, you can see that there are these, this is a model of the 1950s in the United States. And you can see that there are these bright red and yellow areas. Those are the brightest areas on the map as modeled from space. They really focus around the Rust Belt and the Mid-Atlantic. In the 1950s, before Boulder City was even a town, if you were alive, you would have looked up to the night sky here and seen a night sky that was incredibly dark with amazing views of the Milky Way. But anywhere in the US, you would have been less than an hour's drive away from really perfect night skies. By the 1970s, astronauts looking down on the country using Fisher Space Pens produced right here in Boulder City would have seen growing light pollution in the eastern US, but natural conditions persisting in the west. By 1997, when Boulder City's second great engineering feat, the Pattonman Bridge, had yet to be built, the night sky in Boulder City and the rest of the developed west was fading fast. I have a one-year-old, and the night sky she will experience in Boulder City, if projections hold steady, will be severely degraded. We should note that while population has only doubled during this time, light pollution has grown exponentially. And many communities have begun to reach out to my team at the National Park Service to see what they can do to improve their night sky. In 2017, a rural county in eastern Washington reached out to ask me and my team if we could monitor the transition of their LED lighting retrofit. They were changing from high-pressure sodium to LED lighting to save money. But they also wanted to improve lighting for their community and residents. They wanted to know if the lights they chose were reducing sky glow. Shiloh County changed 3,693 high-pressure sodium lights to LEDs, and they gave us locations and specs for all of the lights they bought. Like Boulder City, they were transitioning from high-pressure sodium to LED. The positive part was that the lights would be more energy efficient and better shielded. The negative part is that the lights had a harsher color temperature and would appear brighter on the ground. On the right side of each light, you see a spectral profile of that light. This describes the color content. The high-pressure sodium light with its warmer temperature has a lot of energy in the yellow and orange part of the spectrum, while the new LED light has the blue bump absent in the high-pressure sodium light that causes this light to appear All sky images, like the ones we discussed earlier, were collected before the retrofit and after the retrofit. When the LED lights were installed, the community became 50% brighter. This was a surprise and a disappointment for the community. And understanding the impact of this made me want to bring this information back to my own community in Boulder City so that we could make informed choices. Boulder City is currently transitioning to LED lights, and I see us making the same mistakes, but even worse. Our lights are brighter and with a cooler color temperature than the ones installed in Washington. And I want to spend some time to think about why this might be bad for our community. So much, oh, wrong side. One of the things I love about living in Boulder City is the historic community character. Just based on aesthetics alone, there's a warmth that resonates when you visit a historic town. Blue-white light diminishes this. It also increases glare and gives you the sense that you are walking into a hospital or a grocery store. To maintain a historic ambiance, many communities are switching to warmer lights. So much of our history in Boulder City starts with the construction of the Hoover Dam. Our whole community is built on the sweat and toil these families experienced when moving to this landscape. For many of them, looking at the night sky must have been like nothing they ever had ever seen. The natural dry air and stable conditions provide some of the most amazing natural star-filled skies. This was such an important and meaningful part of their experience that the dam celebrated its beginnings with a star chart. When we look at the night sky, we are connected to those dam workers and to the history of our community. Maintaining our ability to see the night sky preserves that heritage. Of course, we are not only concerned with our past. We care about the well-being of our community today. Many people wrongly assume that by reducing light, we will be making it less safe. This is not true, and there's no research to support it. Night sky friendly lighting reduces glare, which is actually one of the biggest safety concerns for people at nighttime. It can be pretty hard to describe glare in a PowerPoint, but we have all experienced it. One example that often resonates with drivers is the bright blue headlights that would temporarily blind you when driving down the dark road. They don't make those headlights anymore because they're not safe. Too much bright, unshielded light can make it harder to see in dimly lit areas. You probably could not see that there is a man behind the fence in the second image. But when the light is shielded by the photographer's hand, he is much easier to see. That is because glare and bright lights make this nighttime environment less safe. Night sky friendly lighting should be fully shielded, have a warm color temperature, and be dimmed so that your transition to artificially lit environments from dark environments are easier on your eyes, especially on older eyes. In addition to community well-being for safety and comfort, there are also negative health impacts of using streetlights with too much blue light, or that blue bump that I referenced earlier. The American Medical Association came out with guidance in 2016 that all lights should be below 3,000 K. That's a color temperature. All lights should be below 3,000 K to reduce negative health impacts. The blue bump has been linked to the disruption of your circadian rhythm, sleeping patterns, and can lead to many negative health outcomes for humans. The lights in Boulder City are currently, that we are currently using to replace our old high-pressure sodium lights, have a color temperature of 4,500 K. That's much colder than the guidelines recommended for a healthy community. In addition to the people that I care about in my community, my personal work for the NPS means that I am concerned about wildlife, too. Until about 100 years ago, all life that has evolved to live in this harsh, yet really beautiful climate in Boulder City had evolved to live half of its life in daylight and half in darkness. By changing this fundamental rhythm of life, we are also impacting the way all animals interact with our environment in Boulder City. It impacts a countless number of species, mostly drawing wildlife like bats, insects, and birds into town instead of keeping them in the wild ecosystems where they belong. We all know that wildlife is attracted to light and has used it as a signal to navigate their landscapes. Here, we can see on the left, the beautiful super moon over Boulder City. Next to four incredibly bright lights from the dump. Where the moon used to be the brightest thing on the landscape, we can see in the simple example how we are changing the environment. We can do better for our residents who want to enjoy events like the super moon, and for our wildlife that use the moon to navigate their landscapes safely. The impacts of bad lighting were on full display in 2019, when we had a really white year in the valley. A ton of grasshoppers emerged, and the media called it a grasshopper apocalypse. But really, it was a result of terrible lighting used throughout the Las Vegas Valley. In this video, we can see what happens when 46 million insects are attracted to the bad lighting in the Las Vegas Valley. When I press play, you will watch the transition from daylight to night. And the inset shows the Vegas Valley, that inset on the right. Before dusk, the grasshoppers begin to spread out over a wide area gathered near vegetation. But as daylight faded, they took to the skies and clustered up to the brightest regions. When the sun rose, they dispersed back into the natural environment. This, of course, had negative outcomes for businesses, as many tourists and residents refused to leave their hotel rooms to avoid the onslaught of grasshoppers. This hurt tourism in the Vegas Valley. But in Boulder City, we offer a different experience. Promoting ourselves as a gateway community that uses dark, that uses night sky friendly lighting, or that chooses to be designated as a dark sky community, could be a real economic benefit for us and small businesses. Boulder City is perfectly situated between the remaining darkest areas left in the United States. You can see in that arrow. We could draw travelers to our community and celebrate the natural night sky here. An evaluation study looked at the economic impact of astro tourism in the Colorado Plateau, Dark Sky Cooperative, and that includes Boulder City. It showed that in 10 years, $2.5 billion will be spent in this area because of astro tourism. That is the tourism that comes when people flock to places where they can see the night sky. Because as you can see in this map, they can no longer see it in their own backyards. This type of tourism is particularly lucrative because often, these folks spend the night in hotels and eat multiple meals in an area because they have to stay. In addition to our appeal to outsiders, it is very true that many of the residents of Boulder City just love looking up at the stars. And having better lights in their community means better night skies for us, for our kids, and for the natural amenity areas that we border. All of this to say, we can still have lighting, we just want to be conservative in our use. In the image on the left, you can see how the lights are shining off target in the mountains instead of being useful for the people it serves. Boulder City would not be the first city to do this. There are many communities that have undergone the transition. One of the first cities to start installing night sky friendly lighting was Flagstaff, Arizona. These two cities, Cheyenne and Flagstaff, have approximately the same population. But because Flagstaff uses night sky friendly lighting, the appearance of the two from space is very different. When I take my camera there, the appearance on the ground is also very significant. Flagstaff has made night skies a part of their culture with dark sky breweries and coffee shops. Promoting the night sky should be a priority for our community. Because as you can see in these images, there is an immediate impact that occurs when you install this type of lighting. Boulder City does a lot to improve the beauty of the community, like putting up sculptures or planting trees. Using lighting to make our community more welcoming and more beautiful is another way that we can have an immediate impact on making our community better for residents and visitors. Because we are not the first community to do this, we can take some very concrete lessons learned from other places and apply it here to make the best decisions. As you can see from these, from the two different types of light in this photo on Utah Street, we are headed in the wrong direction. You don't need fancy equipment to tell you that we are in the middle of a transition to a brighter, harsher type of lighting in the front as opposed to a softer, warmer lighting in the background. We already know that fully shielding lights, like the ones we have, is not enough. We should invest in lighting with a warmer color temperature. And some of our lighting may need to be dimmed. Adding controls like dimmers can give us the freedom to more simply improve lighting in our community. In summary, the simple steps we should include in all lighting decisions should be to fully shield our light, warm up the color, reduce the intensity, and consider adding additional controls like timers or motion sensors to improve safety. From this presentation, I hope I have made it clear that night sky friendly lighting in Boulder City will not make it too dark to see. But it will reduce energy costs, improve the quality of life for residents, enhance the natural beauty and historic character. It will set us apart from our neighbors in the west as a natural amenity-based community with a lot of charm. It will increase safety and promote astro tourism and other types of tourism as an added benefit. It will contribute to local businesses that make our community thrive. Night sky friendly lighting accomplishes all of the goals of Boulder City's mission. And I just wanted to thank all of you for letting me have this opportunity to talk to you today. I hope you will consider the use of night sky friendly lighting in our community. And I'm ready to take any questions or have a discussion with any of you if you'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pipkin. Councilmember Adams, any additional information you'd like to provide?
You know, not at this time. I have talked at great lengths with Ashley myself. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty up to date on a lot of the information she has. But I certainly, if anybody here has questions for her, I certainly would, would strongly encourage you to ask them while, while she's here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I just want to thank you. That was a great presentation, very informative. And you mentioned something in there as far as dimmers go.
Uh huh.
Can you maybe explain just a tiny bit more about that, what that entails?
Yeah. So all of the lights that we've installed, the LED lighting that we've installed currently in Boulder City, has the ability to be dimmed. If you remember that example from Shiloh County in Washington, they are actually going back in their community after the results of our study to install dimmers on all of their lights, to dim them down to 50%, to make them equivalent to what they were before. So a light, a control, like a dimmer, can go on top of the light, and it can be, there's a lot of different ways you can use them. But a common way is that you can set a timer so that every night at 2:00 AM, you can reduce how bright the light is by 80% if you want to. Or at 9:00 PM, if you just think our community has lights that are too bright, which I think in a few places that the light is too bright, at 7:00 PM, you can set them to 70% or 60% of what they currently are. So you can time the lighting to be lowered, and that saves energy costs. It saves energy and would, would make the community, I think, more beautiful. Yeah.
Just one more thing about that, that I have a question. I know that we have a lot of different types of lights
Yes.
in our community. Do those work on all of those kinds of lights?
Yes. So on all of the ones that look, on all of the LED lights that I look like this, I'm trying to explain, but that look like this, and that are pointed downward, those will work, those dimmers will work on all of those that are currently LED lights right now. It will not work on the warm-colored, high-pressure sodium lights. And I, the dimmers that I am most from, I'm not a lighting expert. I deal a lot with lighting. But like the ones downtown in the, the center of, in the historic district, I don't know of any dimmers that would work for them. I'm sure that there are some. I just am not as familiar with those particular types of lights as I am with the kind of streetlight or parking lot lights that we have in the rest of the community. Yeah. Anything else, Sherri?
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much for the presentation. I want to thank you, Councilman Adams, for, for bringing this up. Because I too have, over the last few years, received complaints from neighbors. In fact, one of my neighbors had a special shield built so that he could sleep at night. The, his bedroom is in the front of the house, and the new light shines right into the house. I also notice out here, I sometimes get up in the middle of the night and just sit and look outside, and it's, it's lit up like a baseball field and maybe one car. I, I know that we've just replaced most of our lights from the, the sodium lights to the LED lights, which of course asks a financial question.
Sure.
And you said there are dimmers for, I think they're called the Cobra Heads. And you said there are dimmers for, I think they're called the Cobra Heads.
The Cobra Heads are the old high pressure sodium lamps, but the LED lamps.
The ones that stick out from the pole. And then there's the ones that sit on top of a pole and then there's a fancy name for the ones that look old fashioned.
Yeah, the acorns, sometimes they're referred to as acorn lights.
They're called what?
Acorns.
Okay, acorns, yeah. And are, for all of the LED lights, are there dimmers? I mean.
Yeah, for, for most of the, and the acorn lights that we have, those, you might, I, I haven't checked in a few weeks, but like by the post office, there used to be warm color acorn lights. And then on the main street, there were these really bright, white, blue acorn lights. So those acorn lights can have different color temperatures as well, just wanted to clarify that. And then for most LED lights, you can have dimmers. The dimmers will not do anything about the color of the light, they will only just reduce the intensity of the light.
Reduce the Kelvin, the, the number?
The, so Kelvin is the, like 3,000 K or 4,500 K, whenever I refer to that, that is the CCT, it's color correlated temperature.
So that is the color?
That is the color. It will just reduce the intensity and brightness, which there's a lot of different metrics for that, but lumens or brightness is.
Okay, so there is a way, we may not be able to at this point change the color of the lights, but there's a way to reduce the intensity of the lights.
Yes, that's what a dimmer would do. If the community was interested in trying to look for opportunities, or maybe in the future, not purchase lights like that anymore, then I think that would be a positive step forward. But you would have to replace the luminaire to change the color temperature of those LED lights.
But the LED lights do come in different temperatures.
Yes, they do. There's color temperatures that are very similar, 2,200 K, which is the old high pressure sodium, they were about, they were around 2,200 K. There are LED lights you can buy where that blue bump that I showed you is minimized or absent altogether.
Now, do they, do they still offer the level of safety? I know that's an argument in terms of being able to see a distance and.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm happy to help clarify that question. Bright blue lighting can sometimes cause more intense glare and that, especially for older eyes transitioning from darker places to more well-let places are more harmful for, for, I think could cause more glare, cause more dark spots, and can reduce the amount of safety. Warmer color lights with shielding, like the ones that I'm talking about that are 2,200 K, for example, of color temperature, I know it's a lot of metrics, but I'm happy to, to explain it or show it with pictures or anything, but those would increase safety.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Anything you need clarified, I'm happy to do it. I know it's a lot of numbers and metrics, makes it hard to explain.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
Do you know of any grants out there to, to help cover the cost to replace those bulbs or fixtures?
Yeah, so our colleague, oh, she left, but she was talking about EDA. There's actually a fund right now, it's for tourism, and there's two buckets of money. There's state money that the governor puts forward and requests, but there's also a competitive pocket of money. And for that competitive pocket of money, we, our community could apply for funding to replace the 2,600, 2,560 lights that Keegan told me that we have in our community. So that's 1,000 less than they had in Shalane too. But you could use that funding of money to, you know, support night skies in Boulder City and make it about tourism in our community, make it about an economic benefit to draw people to Boulder City. And you could, that's a current pot of money. The state side competitive grants for the American Rescue Plan, EDA, Economic Development Administration is providing those funds right now. There, yeah, okay. There's other ones too, but you could talk, yeah, it's probably better to get Keegan in here and talk about those opportunities, so.
He's sitting right behind you.
Yeah. I didn't see him at first, yes.
And I know he knows about those because I know I've been talking with him for a few years about those.
Yeah.
You know, and, and in Keegan's defense, you know, somebody got a good deal on some lights a while ago and purchased a large quantity. The dimmer solution, again, I, I think that's something that is definitely worth looking into because we have these existing bulbs out there, but then, you know, balance it against what, what does that cost? I know on my own street, most are still the sodium lights. But there's one, one new LED.
Yeah.
And boy, it sure sticks out. And, you know, the sense that I get is it does not improve safety. It's much brighter, but you don't get the light that seems to travel a long distance that seems to be concentrated in one place.
That's because of the improved shielding.
Well, actually, I don't think there's any shielding on that.
On that one?
You know, and it may be, you know, you're talking to somebody with some aging eyes.
No, it's okay.
But it, it just seems that the warm light seems to travel further, whereas the white light seems to just shine right there and doesn't disperse as much as the other. I think the photograph you had where it shows a man standing there that you cannot see until the light is shielded is an example of that type of thing where it may appear bright, but it's not helping your vision. And also, having been somebody who grew up here and yet you used to be able to look up and see the Milky Way, of course, we live next to probably the brightest city in all of America. You know, I, that's not going to change, I don't think, but certainly there are efforts that we can make. And I think some of the solutions that you've brought tonight are very helpful things that we can do. Lights are going to burn out, so when we replace them, we should be wise about what we do with those.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the, I wanted to just address what you mentioned about how the light spreads from the old high pressure sodium lamps. The new LED lamps, one of the greatest things about them is that they have really improved directionality. They have, that's what makes them more energy efficient. So they have the ability to be really targeted. But the old high pressure, I mean, the old, the, the LED lamps, unfortunately, when they first came out, were incredibly blue and incredibly bright.
I believe that's the type we have.
Yeah, and so it's, yeah, and, and they, they were sold, many early adopters of that technology are going through the same process. That's why we're so lucky right now to have so many previous examples that we can work on and make better decisions in the future.
And, and I would suggest too that, you know, another option is to look where, you know, we, we apparently have a lot of these LEDs with the very blue light. Look where they could be placed where they're not going to impact, you know, whether it's indoors or, or where it might be. But apparently, we still have a lot of them. I know I've had a couple people suggest a BB gun solution, I've never asked them, never asked them for details on that, but it's been mentioned to me. But again, I, I do appreciate your presentation, certainly gives us a lot to think about. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it would be my intention, I, I don't have to necessarily do it now in case there is further discussion, but I would like to direct staff to draft an ordinance that's in compliance with, with night sky friendly lighting. And I think in doing so, we can also then, if we have a plan that's put in place, then staff can also, you know, come up with some different options and how we might want to implement that, you know, whether or not it's starting off with the dimmers and then a replacement program as it comes in online. Because my understanding is that right now, we, we don't really have anything that says what types of lighting is or is not appropriate. So I think that's a good place to start so that, you know, further down the line, if there is considerations we want to change, we can actually look and see where the problem might be. But when we have nothing, we have to kind of start from scratch. So unless there's, there's a further discussion that people would like to have about this, I, there was included a, a very, a very conservative lighting ordinance that was in there, a model ordinance. It doesn't have to be identical to that, it could be tailored to our needs, but if there was anything that was of concern to council that they saw in that, or anything that they don't want to see us doing with our lighting standards, that we could have that discussion now and then hopefully direct staff to come up with a lighting ordinance.
Any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Would you like to propose such a resolution or?
Sure, I would move that council direct staff to draft a lighting ordinance that's in compliance with night sky, night sky standards. Further, that staff also research potential grant opportunities that could assist with the implementation of those standards and different implementation plans on how we can achieve those night sky friendly goals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right. Again, Ms. Pipkin, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, item number 13 is introduction of bill number 1907. Anyone wishing to introduce bill number 1907?
Yes, I would like to introduce bill number 1907 by title only, waive the reading.
Thank you. Introduction of Bill Number 1907, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada approving Agreement Number 21-1943, a land sales agreement between the City of Boulder City and Mark Wells for approximately 3,661 square feet of land, also known as tract 355, immediately adjacent to 383 Claremont Street. Bill Number 1907 will be considered at the September 24th, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number 14, presentation from Fire Chief Gray regarding the Fire Department's annual report. Chief Gray?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here tonight to talk about our accomplishments for last year and just give a brief overview of the coronavirus response that we're still in, unfortunately. So last year, obviously, when the pandemic hit, we stood up our emergency operations center. We've had it at different states from fully functioning to where we're just meeting with our EOC weekly now. During the last year, as far as Corona testing, from July 1st through June 30th, we did 6,575 coronavirus tests just this year in July and August. And up till today, we've done another 1,188. And so we're doing them four days a week right now. In addition, whenever we get a call from a school or a business or something that's having a problem, we'll take care of them too. Our vaccination clinics last year vaccinated 6,570 doses of vaccine. That included 300, 3,331 doses and 3,242 doses. We've also given boosters so far to the veterans home for the immune compromised, which is a very small group. And tomorrow and Thursday, we, we have plans to do another small group at the senior center. And it's just a very narrow focus, it's much narrower than the initial immune compromise that was for vaccinations, it's, it's really small. So we've talked, if, if the boosters get approved, we'll continue to, we'll set up another clinic, or we'll do whatever we need to do to continue to take care of the big group. Community outreach was something we talked about that was really important last year. As you know, phone calls were made to every home in Boulder City. I don't know of another city that did that, but we were able to get volunteers together. Michael Mays helped lead that. Former Councilwoman Hoskins was on that. But made phone calls to every home in the city and to find out what the people needed specifically. There was donation coordination, there was support for the four adult care facilities, and that still goes on today. So if they're short on masks or if they need any help, we're quick to respond to those since that's our most vulnerable, we want to make sure that doesn't get out of hand. Total calls for service, this is for 2020, we reported to, responded to 55 fire-related responses, and that's mixed up between houses. We actually had one actual structure fire last year. The coronavirus seemed to be good for us, everybody was home, so we didn't have those fires get out of control. But we did have vehicle fires, dumpster fires, we had fans that caught on fire in the ceiling that just didn't become a structure fire. And so really, we define structure fires, actually the members of the house being on fire, not, not a fan or a cabinet being on fire, it's got to really get into the, into the walls and stuff. So last year, we had 1,964, I'm going to remove this, 1,964 EMS calls and one mass casualty incident, remember the bike accident far south of town. 76 technical rescue responses, including four semi accidents on I-11 and US 95. And then 304 other calls for service. And so that's assisting PD, assisting people up, gas leaks, things like that nature. I talked with the mayor during briefings and he wanted to know some trends. And so in 2018, we had a total of 2,120 calls with 1,750 of those being EMS related. In 19, we had 2,467 calls with 1,913 being EMS. 2020, we saw a small dip of 2,391 total with, but an increase in EMS calls, which the pandemic would explain that. And then this year, so far, we've had 1,991 calls, but we're projected through the end of the year to be 2,809. And so from the last three years, we're seeing about a 9% increase in our medical calls every year. The other calls kind of fluctuate, sometimes we have, you know, some of the other ones, those ones go up and down. The only thing that's been a change is in the last year, we've got a new record management system. And so we're going to be able to break down specifically what kinds of calls. In the past, they just looked at EMS calls and everything else. So we're going to be able to break it out by hazmat, technical rescue, you know, specifically what kinds of fires, so we'll be able to give a little bit more detail. And we plan to include some of that on our, on our website so that people will be able to go see it a little more frequently. Last year for training, we actually did a complete overhaul of our fire department's training system. And so the training records and things like that, we found did not be sufficient. And we really held to a standard by the insurance services organization and office. And so the ISO, they come in every five years and inspect us, and, and one of the things they look at is our training records. And so we didn't have sufficient records in place. So those are things that we went through and those have all been redeveloped. Now firefighters are averaging at least 25 hours a month of training. So that's firefighting training, EMS training, tech rescue hazmat. And that's going to continue to increase as we, as we're adding more capabilities to the fire department. We found that we didn't have a hazmat technician program in, in town. And when we did our community risk assessment, we found a lot of hazmat risk out in the solar farms and some of our industries. So, so far, we've got eight members trained to be hazmat technicians. Our goal is to have all 21 trained by 2023. So typically, a hazmat team is about six or eight, which works out great, we have just enough. So we have two people trained in rope rescue training. One of the things we found in the past with the zip line when it was operating, some of the rocks and stuff, when people would have issues or San Diego gas and electric, when they have an issue, we would have to call in Las Vegas Metro PD or Henderson to come in and do the rescue because we didn't have anybody. We're still going to call them for help, but our goal is to be able to get on scene, get to the patient, and keep them from falling any further, keep them from being hurt anymore. We'll need the bigger departments to come in and help get us out of that situation, but we'll be able to safely go in and, and make our, our residents and visitors safe, and that's our goal. Reserve training, all of our reserve firefighters get a minimum of four hours of training a month in addition to 256 hours when they first come on. And so that's broken up over 16 weeks, they come in on a Saturday and they do 12 hour shifts. And so we also made a change, we used to hire reserve firefighters and then train them. And now we actually have people pay us to be cadets and we train them. And when they're done with training, then they get to become reserve firefighters. So we've been able to transfer some of that cost onto them and take it off of us. One of the things that we did is we started to participate more in regional training. And so one of the things that we had created here in Boulder City was the, the state accreditation consortium. And so it's a user group for fire departments across Nevada to come together and, and work through some problem solving, different things. And so we had our first meeting, I think it was August 4th here. And so we had people from all over the valley and Reno came in, some of the DOD departments. And then we also hosted a three day class for accreditation, August 16th to the 18th. So it's been kind of nice to start getting a little bit more involved and more networked with our partners outside of the pandemic. So I was pretty excited coming in there when I did this PowerPoint in August, we had 17 reserve firefighters. As of today, we have 11. We hired two of them. Our fire analyst came from our reserve program, Sarah. And then we hired one of the firefighters to replace Captain Walton, who became our training officer. We had two inactivated due to personal issues. We're getting ready to lose three to Clark County's Fire Academy, and we have three or four of our new cadets in Henderson's testing process, so we anticipate losing some more. So that's important to us because we have our, we require our reserve firefighters to work a minimum of 48 hours a month. And they do that to offset our overtime. You'll know over past years, we've had really high overtime costs, and it's because a lot of fire departments have rovers or boomers, which is an extra firefighter that's really there to cover vacations and sick leaves and training. We don't have those, and so if a firefighter's off previously prior to my arrival, it was just overtime. And so if a firefighter's off previously prior to my arrival, it was just overtime and that really drives the cost up. It's quite expensive. It's anywhere between twenty one hundred and thirty three hundred dollars, a twenty four hour shift with benefits to do that. And so we looked for ways to solve that. One of the ways we did is we started doing a better job of hiring more reserves and using them better. And so just since July first of this year, we've been able to save seventy thousand dollars in overtime, just in regular overtime by using our reserves better. And so that's why it's kind of a disappointment to see some of them trail off. And so we, we do have a plan in place with H R to be able to fast track some more reserves back in so we can kind of keep that pool. We're really hoping to keep it around twenty four and that helps us have enough to keep our overtime down. It's about four hundred and ninety dollars a day for a reserve firefighter, for a twenty four hour shift for a reserve firefighter versus I think it's fifteen or sixteen hundred for a regular pay for a regular firefighter. So it's, it's a lot cheaper if we can use them. So we use them wherever we can. We also have saved twelve thousand two hundred dollars in that same time period on COVID related overtime where they've been able to come in and fill in for us. So we didn't have to use the regular guys. And it also helps the regular guys because for a while they were getting so much overtime that their checks were great, but they were so fatigued and we don't want firefighters working that are fatigued. And so it was important to, to find a way to reduce that a little bit. Fire accreditation is something that's really important to me. There's thirty two thousand fire departments in the country. There's three hundred that have become accredited. So Greg and I, my deputy chief, both came from accredited departments that we led through and we're in the process of working on getting Boulder City Fire through that process. And so the first step of that was developing a community risk assessment, which is now completed and we've shared it with council. That document, because it talks about risk and where our chemicals are stored, is a confidential document. But we are going to do a standard of cover, which is what we're working on now, and we're going to summarize that document in the standard of cover and that'll be public record. So people will be able to see that one and see a, a basic overview of risk without us telling them where to go get it. We're hoping to have that done by the, by December. And then we're going to do a community driven strategic plan. One of the things in the model is it's, it's one thing for us to do our own fire department strategic plan that'll fall under the city's strategic plan. But it's another thing to have our community tell us what they want from us because we may think we know what they want, but if we don't get their feedback, you know, we're, we're not truly representing our community like we're supposed to. We're continuing to push professional credentialing, which is a way to develop our firefighters. Professional development was something we came here, we found that was really lacking. And so this is really for the individual. They have to go through and fill out a packet and they've got to write technical competencies. They have peer assessors from outside around the country that evaluate them and they decide if they get, become credentialed. And then every three years, they have to come back before them and say, hey, you set goals, did you accomplish them, where are you coming from? And so that's just one of the, one of the things we're trying to do to increase our, our professional development for our firefighters and our officers. Our goal really is when Greg and I retire is to have your, your next chief and deputy chief already in those stations, that they're already trained up and ready to go so you don't have to go hunt for somebody. Not that I was upset that you hunted for the last one, I appreciate it actually. And then peer assessors, and that's really part of the accreditation process is we have peers, other firefighters that travel the country and evaluate. And so there's Greg and I both are peer assessors and we, and we continue to travel and evaluate other fire departments and, and find ways that they're doing things and we bring it back here. So that's something that continues to benefit us. So emergency response, we're really starting to look closer at our, at our response times and, and a lot of people don't know why we set response times. And the reason we do is we really look at two things when we're setting response times. They're not, they're not just our opinions that we think is a good idea. We look at cardiac arrest survival and we look at flashover. And American Heart Association says that for cardiac, if you have a cardiac arrest, within four to six minutes, you need to have somebody doing CPR and get defibrillated or shocked or you start to die, you get brain death. And then seven to ten percent reduction in survival for every minute thereafter. So it's a pretty sharp drop off. The other thing we look at is flashover and that's when, when a fire starts in a house, between six and ten minutes after it starts, it reaches eleven hundred degrees. That's, that's on average. And at that point, everything in the house ignites at the same time. That's not survivable if you're inside the house. And if we're inside the house, we have twenty two seconds to get out. So it's something we try to beat. That, that's why, that's where those times come from. So we try to get in there before those two things occur. We also set some times based on those. And so the national standard for dispatch processing, and that's the time it takes from the, when you dial nine one one until the dispatcher tones up the station is eighty seconds, ninety percent of the time. So when we got here, we looked at where dispatch was and one of the things we found that is a lot of times dispatchers don't know what you want if you don't tell them. And so we, we wrote our policies to say, hey, here's the standard we want you to try to meet. And dispatch has worked really hard with us to try to bring that number down. One of the things we're doing is called pre alert. So instead of them getting all the information from you, as soon as you say, hey, my name's so and so, I live on one, two, three items, I have a fire, they hit a button and tell us right away, hey, we got a fire call coming, start moving towards the truck. And then they'll continue to take that information. And so instead of having your processing time and then your turnout time, they overlap. And so our turnout time standard is ninety seconds and that's based off a national standard. And the travel time that's set by the N F P A and I S O is four minutes, ninety percent of the time. So that puts us at six minutes and thirty seconds. We've been able to reduce the overall response time since January of this year by three minutes and eighteen seconds. And so we've been able to do that through pre, pre alert by reminding our members to move faster. Our deputy chief, every, every couple of weeks sends a report to dispatch and says, hey, you're doing a really good job here. We need you to increase a little bit here. You know, we're trying to streamline different things that we're, we're really trying to focus on reducing that as much as we can. The travel time thing, you know, you can pick a route that's a little faster, but it is what it is. I mean, you, you can't, we don't want them to go faster. We don't want them to be more risky. And so really where we can reduce it is through dispatch processes and through our moving through the station a little quicker, being a little bit more purposeful. Our current monthly response time goal for all, I mean, response time performance for all calls right now is nine minutes and ten seconds. And so you can see we still have some work to do, but we're, we're cutting out everywhere we can, but that's, that's where we're at right now. But again, that's a reduction from twelve minutes and forty eight seconds in January. So it's, it's really getting better. Community risk reduction is another thing we focused on. We got a little, a, a line item added in the budget and we're really trying to focus some of these things. One of the things we talked about is response times is tied to cardiac arrest. And so one of the things we want to start doing is doing more community CPR classes because one of the ways we can reduce your risk to cardiac arrest is to train more people. It was something that was done in King County a while, several years ago, and they really saw their survivability rate go up from, it's about nineteen percent effective. They got it into the thirty or forty percent range, so it was really, a really good program. And so if somebody knows how to do CPR and they start CPR right away, it significantly reduces your chance of surviving until we get there. And so that's one of the things we want to offer. And it actually is, part of that's tied to our, our subscription program that we're going to talk about next council meeting to where we can get more people of that product. So we're also offering stop the bleed classes. Another way people die quite often is severe cuts and bleeds. It's, it's really common in, in the older communities, they get skin tears and they can lose a lot of blood. And so if we can teach them how to, how to manage that before we get there, again, it increases the chances that they're not going to go into shock and have some long term problems. We're, we're looking to reinstitute a child seat, a child seat program, car seat program. The problem is, is really the annual training. It's forty hours a year per individual. And so we're going to figure out how to get one or two people trained and so that we can continue to offer that service. I don't know right now that anybody offers it in, in the city. I think Nevada Highway Patrol is the only one that offers it. So if we have a local mother that needs to put their car seat improperly, we have to send them into the valley. And so we want to see if we can get rid of that. And then there's some geriatric safety programs called remembering when and, and the National Heart, I mean, National Fire Academy puts them out. I think it's on there. Oh, no. So it's, it's just different programs where they teach people how to eliminate fall hazards in their house. And so when firefighters go on a call, they'll look around the house and if there's carpets that are rolled up or if there's extension cords, they'll give them hints on how to, how to make the house safer so they can reduce the chance of falling again or having to call us. And we've talked about trying to establish a community CERT program. It's a citizen emergency response program. And so again, that's something we want to look into a little bit more to see how we can better use volunteers in our community for, for things such as rehab and stuff. We have retired doctors and nurses that, that could be a really benefit to us. So on a fire call in, in Colorado, when it's snowing, it's rough. In Nevada, when it's a hundred and seventeen, it's horrible. And so, you know, needing fresh water and, and a, a chance to pull your gear off and be able to have your blood pressure checked and stuff like that is typically something we assign to fire crews. But it can be assigned to CERT teams so we can get retired nurses and doctors that can come to the scene and we'll bring them, you know, they can use our rig and they can set up a little area to give people fresh water and get them back in service and get them back in there faster. So it's a pretty big benefit. But again, that's, that's down the road. We've got a lot on our plate right now, so we're trying to get as much as we can done. That's my ten slides. I try to go as fast as I can. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, first of all, thank you very much for the great presentation. Everything I have to, to say is very positive. It was shortly before January of two thou, I don't even know what year, twenty, before the pandemic became a thing, that I had done the NIMs training. And I was like, oh, this is cool stuff, E O Cs and all these acronyms and now, you know, you're never going to see anything have to be done like that in my, you know, my tenure here or in my life. And then like a minute later, we're sitting in E O C meetings, talking about this pandemic that showed up. And the fact that you've been able to work on, work proactively on all these other programs. And in the meantime, dealing with testing and, and vaccinations and running this E O C program, it was, it's amazing. It's amazing. So I did want to compliment you and your, and all of your coworkers who, who have supported this, this venture because it's pretty, it's been pretty well done. And I think, let's see. I'll be interested in more in the community CPR and that sort of program because I think it's important in terms of response time and making sure people make it. Thank you, I appreciate.
And in relation to that, NIMs classes, our goal is once this is over, and hopefully it's going to be over soon, is we want to have like a refresher class and make it more relevant. Because I know a lot of the NIMs classes, when you go to them are really dry and they don't really apply necessarily as much as we want them to. And so we want to offer them again for our, our different leaders and make them more, more custom to Boulder City, where you still get the information you need, but it would make sense to Boulder City.
Yeah, you know, they usually were like a gasoline tank overturns by a carnival and it's, it'd be nice to, there are very little relevance for things that are going on today. So I think that would be great.
Yeah, that's even the case for firefighters. It's, it's a rough class to sit through. We'll make this a, a better one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
I also just wanted to say thank you very much for the job that you've done, as she pointed out, helping and assisting the city in the pandemic. But also it's pretty evident that you're reaching out into the community, you're assessing your own house, as it would be said, and making the changes to make it better. And, and you're not satisfied with the status quo. And I'm grateful for that because I feel like then that increases the safety for us here in Boulder City. So thank you for the good work and continue.
I appreciate it. And I'll, I'll commit to that as long as I'm here is, that is my, my reason. I mean, is I, I want this to be safe. I want to know when I, when I leave here, it's better than when I found it, so.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Like everyone has said, the response and the services that were provided by the fire department throughout this pandemic were just extraordinary. I, you know, I, I know, you know, we were even, you know, having people breathing down our necks because we were too efficient. You know, that's, you know, that's, it's oftentimes, you know, I guess what they call a good problem to have maybe, but, you know, I just think it just goes to show just how effective you have been as a chief. I think just the quality of the, the members that are on staff here at the fire department are just really incredible. And I think it's also great, you know, as, as Councilmember Jorgensen had mentioned, you know, you're a professional and you very much care about that, you know, we are, you know, not just, you know, relying on our laurels that we're, that we're going to continue to improve the fire department we have. One of the questions I had is, you know, I think one of the very first meetings we had was, you know, discussing, you know, where we might have some holes in our emergency response. You know, the pandemic was something that was happening overseas, but, you know, we quickly got up to speed. Now that we've done that and, you know, it's, we're still in this thing where everything's always changing, how fast are we able to get right back into it, when and if we need to compared to where we were before?
So another pandemic? Is that what we're talking about? So, so.
Or just this, as this one continues to change, our needs change, yeah.
Yes, we've been really conscientious on building our P P E supply. And so we're trying to keep a six month supply on hand. Even when this is over, we want to keep a six month supply. We visit with Pulse Corps and we have storage so that in the future, we won't be caught here. One of the plans is some of that stuff does expire. So as it starts to get closer, we're going to take our, our newer stuff in the station and we'll rotate it out. So hopefully we always have fresh stuff waiting for us. We've talked about, we've, we've got sheltering stuff now in place, so that wouldn't be an issue. We've, we've got pretty good plans, but we're doing our, we're going to do a full review of our emergency operation plan when this is over. And to make sure that we've, I mean, because we've got to live at this time, it was theoretical before, we've actually got to be, to do it. So we're going to be able to go through and clean up where it's weak and there wasn't a pandemic section, so there will be now. We have a really good experience there. And so we're going to continue to revise that. So I, I hope that we'll be ready. You know, we do now have a risk assessment. We're working on the standard of cover. That standard of cover really says, based on the risk in the community, here's how we're going to respond. And so that's, that's not something we've had before, so that'll be a really good, at least a starting plan. I mean, we always, it, it changes, it's never the same and so we can deviate, but we'll at least have a good starting point.
Excellent, thank you very much.
It's been unreal, last nineteen months, the work that you and, and the firefighters have done. You know, we have heard from all of the other departments, all of the other entities in Clark County. I believe Boulder City shined above everyone else. The department here took steps to do things that, and actually not just to start doing things, but actually accomplish things when other entities had not even gotten to the point of planning it. So outstanding response to the pandemic. My compliments to you and all the firefighters, not just the firefighters, all the rest of the staff out there. This has been a very trying circumstance. That aside from normal operations, you know, before you arrived here in Boulder City and, and I had been elected to council and looked into what was the status of our reserve program, essentially there was not one at that time. So I appreciate the work you've done in reestablishing that. You know, in the old days, that was always called the volunteers. And for a city the size of Boulder City, it's certainly not uncommon to see a department that, this size, that utilizes reserve firefighters. And again, the descriptions you've given on how they're being used, it not only gives a person an opportunity to become a full time firefighter, even though that may not be here in Boulder City. But it also contributes to the community and allows us to put people out there in the field when they're needed, where as a city, we can't afford to double the size of our firefighters. I think it was last year or the year before, we did increase each platoon by one person for a total of three new firefighters. So, you know, we, we try and make progress, but we know that Boulder City doesn't grow a great deal. And that, that has an impact on what we can do as a small community. I appreciate also what you're doing with the training, certainly relying on the departments. My understanding is we've had a, an agreement with the city of Henderson for our firefighters to use their training facilities. I know I had an opportunity one time to go to the city of Las Vegas's training facility. We're lucky in the fact that even as a small community, we do have other departments close by that have, you know, well developed training facilities that can be relied on. I would like, you know, as I mentioned to you in my briefing, you know, I, I'm data driven. There's the old saying, if you don't have data, all you have is, is an opinion. I would like to see the, the numbers on numbers of calls over the past three years or so. You know, how we're going to evaluate this, the period of the pandemic, I don't know. But, you know, that's obviously skewed the numbers in some ways and so we'll just have to adjust to that. But that, I think, is a very important factor in determining where we're at as a community and what type of services we may need.
Yeah, and I agree, I'm very much data driven and, and our new RMS program gives us that capability. So our, our plan really is to be able to dig down and find time of day, day of week, whatever we're looking for. We have that capability now since October of last year. So where we really lose it is going backwards just because it's just, you know, it's just not there. But going forward, we have, we have a really good program in place that works really well.
Yeah, I, I think just, you know, the numbers you've quoted this evening, that's going to be helpful as we look at budgets and all of that kind of thing, where we're at as a community. I, I understand it's not as granular of information, but if it's all we have, it's all we have to look at for right now. Again, the system that you're, you have developed sounds terrific.
Sure, and if there's any specific stuff you want in addition to that, I'm, I'm happy to try to get it. Our, like I said, that program's pretty robust. We just have to know what you want because a lot of the reports, I mean, they're not pre-built, we have to just go build them, but we can build it and find whatever you're looking for. So we're, we're happy to provide that. So we're happy to provide that.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, don't leave.
Oh, no, I'm going to stick around.
Item number 15.
All right, item number 15 is a resolution, a request in council to establish a reserve battalion chief classification and title. So NFPA 1710, which is kind of where we get a lot of our response times, and it really is the standard that we use as a guideline. Texas is the only state, I believe, in the country that's mandated to follow it. But it really is the gold standard. It's a consensus standard for how you respond. It's how we send, why we send what we send. And it really breaks that all down. In that NFPA standard, in section 5.2.2.3, it says that for all full alarm assignments, which is a structured fire, it's a mass casualty incident, it's a big wreck on the highway, that dispatch shall, or a chief officer shall be notified and respond to all full alarm assignments. Most cities in the country, even smaller fire departments, have a duty chief. Now, in Boulder City, they've never had a duty chief. And so what's happened is I'm the duty chief because I live here. You know, during business days, obviously, my deputy chief's here. And if we have a big event, he comes in. But he's coming in from, he lives in Whitney Ranch. So there's not currently a residency requirement for the chiefs. Be honest, I know one of the people that spoke earlier suggested that. That's something that I would love to see. I think chiefs, specifically for the fire department, I don't want to speak for the departments. But because of what we do, I really do think in the future that there should be a residence requirement. I think that'd be a good idea. But because of the way it works, for the last 18 months, I've been on call. And so I get up in the morning and turn my radio on and my day off. And I listen to calls and answer dispatch and talk to them all day. And I shut it off at bedtime. And then they call me in the middle of the night and ask me questions. And so that's been how we've done, you know. And so that, it's not ideal, but that's what we've done. You know, ideally, we'd love to have a duty chief. Right now, we don't. And so we're trying to look for a creative way to do that, you know. And so what we came up with is this reserve battalion chief. We put some restrictions on it that they would have to be within eight minutes of the fire department. And that's because, going back to NFPA 1710, that's how much time that person has to be there. Our thought was that we're trying to figure out how to do it. And it doesn't benefit as necessarily as a reserve to have them sitting at the station all day, you know. And so what we thought is, it would be half the pay of a reserve firefighter for a shift. So that works out to about $226, I think. And then they would be on call for a 24-hour period, which means we'd give them a radio and they would do like I do. So if I'm out of town or if I'm on vacation, that person would monitor that. If a call happened, they would respond to the fire station, pick up one of our extra vehicles and respond like they would normally would to the call. If the call exceeds four hours, we would pay them an extra $50 an hour. If it's under four hours, that $226 is their pay. Now, most house fires and things of that nature don't exceed four hours. And that's, so that's kind of why we picked that. That's a pretty, most fires you can expect to be an hour or two unseen. So in that case, that person would be on scene. They would be the supervisory chief officer. They would let our seven people go inside and do what they do. And then make sure they're safe and clear and leave. And it's important to remember too, you know, we have a station captain, but there's two different roles in the fire service. So a captain is a task or tactical supervisor. And a chief is a strategic supervisor. That's important on the fire ground because there needs to be somebody that sees the big picture, that sees the building that's on fire, watches for the house and see if it's getting ready to collapse or if the smoke changes. The captain's on the hose line inside the building. He's watching the crew. They're going through the house. They're deciding on which room to put the fire out in. But nobody's watching the outside of that if there's not a chief on there. If we pull our captain out and have him stand out there now, instead of having the seven that we have available, we have six. And where that's a concern is, again, the standard nationally for a fire response is 15 firefighters. So we're starting with seven. If we take one of those away, now we have six. That limits what we can do. And so realistically, on a house fire with six people, we can do a rescue if we know somebody's inside or we can keep the neighbors' houses from burning down. And we can lob water into the windows until Henderson gets here and hope that's enough. But we can't go inside and do a regular offensive firefight like you would typically do. But we don't have the people to safely do that. And if we take that risk and do it and somebody gets hurt and we're outside of this national standard, I think we have some concerns that we have to answer. Why did we deviate from the national consensus standards? And so because of that, we don't want to take that captain out. We want to have a chief officer there. And that's really where this, what kind of drove this. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions for you on this.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I have the information correct. You're talking about somebody who currently lives in Boulder City, who would be qualified, who is a reserve? No, they're not currently, but they are trained to be a chief.
Correct, so there's, one of the things that's nice about our reserve firefighter program is, we've trained, we, the fire department has trained firefighters over the years who went out to Henderson and Clark County and different places, became chief officers, but still live here. And so they still live here. Some are retired and some are active. And some actually show up today on a fire. So Kurt Estes would be an example, I think it's Estes. I'll be on a fire and he'll show up in a polo shirt with a radio and say, "Chief, do you need help?" So they're already coming out there, you know. And so they're offering, obviously, I can't abuse him because he's not an employee and I can't put him in that, you know, net position. But so there's, that's who we would try, that's our hope is that we'd reach out to that retired group or active group of chiefs that live in here that'd be willing to take a weekend here or a weekend there. It's not a full-time thing. Again, so if you look in the staff report, we figured about $11,000 a year for this position, plus whenever training they participate in. So if we're doing strategy and tactics training or fire ground training, we would ask them to come occasionally so they're current with our way of doing business. Because it is a little different as you go, but the incident command system's pretty unique, I mean, pretty similar. In fact, we've been training on Henderson's incident command process, which is different than where I came from. But since they're coming in, we need to be talking the same language. We can't have two different ways of doing business. So, yeah, there wouldn't be a current, our current reserve firefighters, none of them would be qualified to do it. They're just entry-level firefighters.
Now, they would just, they would just work on an as-needed basis? As opposed to every Saturday and alternate Tuesdays?
Yeah, I think we figured up to four shifts a month. And so if I know I'm going to be, like, I'm going hunting in October, the end of October and into November, I'm going hunting and I got my fifth grandbaby being born, so I'm going to stop and have a visit. So I'll be in Colorado for eight or nine days. And so a couple of those days, the weekend days, we would have this person potentially be the reserve one. And then during the week, we would have Greg do it. And so that would have a better chance of having somebody on scene if we have an incident on the weekends here.
Okay, and the one you're saying who would be, live, doesn't live in Boulder City, the deputy?
That's Greg.
But they would be at the station?
During the day, yes. And he still responds, don't get me wrong, he doesn't, it's not that he doesn't respond, is. He still comes, but he's coming, he's, Whitney Ranch is about 22 or 24 minutes away. So he's coming behind Engine 82 and Engine 83, I think, are the Henderson stations with the chief. So he's behind their chief. So he's still coming, but he's not, he's not given us that advantage that we need, that really, that first 10 minutes in a fire is really important. You know, that's really when we decide if we're going to be able to stop the fire, if we're going to lose the fire. And it goes to be in a foundation we're going to protect, you know. And so it's really important to get him in there faster, so. And in fairness, he did look for a home in Boulder City and he just couldn't, that's where he started his look. And he ended up, he found, he bought it somewhere else. So I mean, I really would love to have him here in the city, honestly. That'd be great.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just have a couple of comments. One, certainly don't want to see you being, you know, overwhelmed with the responsibilities. I do think one thing, though, to keep in mind about these standards, they're the ideal, they're the recommended thing. You know, I know that there are communities in Nevada and all across America, they simply don't have the resources. They no longer have EMS services in many places, especially in the rural West, just can't be afforded. So as far as something like that goes, I think, you know, we always need to keep in mind what is available to be able to provide these services. We're not a major metropolitan area. We're not a major metropolitan city. But this certainly sounds like the type of program that we can certainly manage. You know, the statements about requiring city employees or certain levels to live here in Boulder City. Again, as you just said about the assistant chief, he looked here, he could not find something. I don't know that that's a realistic thing that we can do if there are people who are here and are capable of doing this. And again, we're not talking about somebody that we're training in our reserve program who's new to this. We're talking somebody who has many years of experience. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use anybody in the reserve program. No, they're great firefighters, but that's what they are as firefighters.
Well, again, it gets down to that experience and qualifications that that's what we have. And again, you know, the flip side of it is, the city of Las Vegas or Henderson or North Las Vegas, they're not requiring their people to live there. So, because we know some of them live here and we're happy they live here. So again, I think that's just something to keep in mind. But certainly, this program, I think, is certainly something to look at. And as you said, we can evaluate it in a year or two and see where it's at. But I will make the motion to approve Resolution 7335.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, thank you very much, chief. And maybe you'll be able to get a good night's sleep one day.
Yeah, thank you.
Brings us to item number 16 for possible action, Resolution 7336. We're going to buy some, well, actually, we're going to rent some golf carts for a while, right?
You betcha. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, my name is Roger Hall, your Parks and Recreation Director. So item number 16 on the agenda tonight is Resolution 7336. You know, proven agreement between the city of Boulder City and Easy Go Division of Textron, Inc. for the purchase of a fleet of 130 golf carts for Boulder Creek. The current fleet of golf carts at Boulder Creek is eight years, they're eight years old and in a poor state of repair. The typical life expectancy is between five to seven years for a golf cart. And in the past 18 months with the COVID requirements, they've deteriorated rapidly with the increase in golf rounds at both golf courses, which is a good thing for Boulder City, and the one golfer per golf cart mandate that was put down by the governor. Purchasing a new fleet, 130 golf cart fleet from Boulder Creek was approved as part of the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2022 budget. I have Paul Sekura here, purchasing manager with the finance department, who would like to go over the process that we went through to get to this point. So Paul?
Good evening, mayor and councilman. Paul Sekura, I'm the purchasing, grants, contracts, and risk manager for the city. Thanks for giving me a moment to talk about this. You may recall in the CIP planning that we did, we had got a quote about a year and a half ago, or actually, our golf course manager did, from Easy Go for a little over $1.4 million for these golf carts. And as we decided to move forward with this contract a couple of months ago, I contacted Easy Go and asked them if they had any other government contracts that they had been a part of. And they told me they were, so I got a copy of it. And knowing that in the state of Nevada, the NRS gives us the authority to join other contracts of other government agencies, even from within or without or from outside of the state, I asked Easy Go to give me a quote for a competitive bid and contract that was done from the state of Texas. And when it came back, all said and done, it was about $1.2 million. So by using this, the NRS, we saved about $219,000 in this project. Just really quickly, we'll be making five annual payments. The first payment will be, let me get this. Year one, which would happen after council approval, should that happen, the first payment of $283,000 the first year. And then $228,000 every year after, there, after, for years two, three, four, and five. At the end of year five, we would own the equipment outright. It would belong to the city. That's all I have right now. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen? Nope, she was just reaching for the button. She wasn't going to press it.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Again, when this was originally proposed in the budget, it was to use the money from the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. That was not something that the council was going to approve. So this money is coming out of the general fund?
It's come out of capital improvement. And any of the revenues that we get from the golf cart rentals will go back into general fund revenue.
Okay, and I know with the two courses, there were two different ways of calculating it. One had it broken out, green fees and cart rentals. And the other included the cart rental in the green fee. So that becomes a little difficult to do. Mr. Hall, was that, is that still the case? That we were not able to identify specifically what the cart rental fees are?
We use the, I think it was $20, $20 per cart. As, and we broke it out like that. And Paul did a nice benefit package on how long it would take to pay off the golf carts and how much money we would make over that five-year period. And it was quite substantial, so.
Okay, so are we in the black or in the red then, projected-wise?
At the end of 19 months of the lease, so just short of two years, we will get into the black. According to my cost-benefit analysis that I broke down.
And if the number of rounds continue at the current pandemic level?
Correct.
When people are looking for almost any excuse to get outside?
These numbers were based on renting 100 of the 130 carts a day, which is a little low. I could have went higher and based it on 130 and we paid off in 14 months. But I wanted to go with a realistic number, so 19 months.
Okay, I appreciate you, you know, taking the time to analyze that and being able to present the information. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I move to approve Resolution Number 7336.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, Mr. Hall? Thank you, and Mr., you as well. We, again, appreciate you presenting the information.
Thank you.
All right, we move now to item number 17, Resolution 7338. Chief Shea?
Good evening. This is an inter-local agreement at the request of Las Vegas Metro for some assistance on special events that occur within their jurisdiction. As these events have been draining out of the manpower for everybody, we've entered into a ability to do a cooperative agreement based upon off-duty hours. So these would be, our officers would volunteer to work off-duty to assist at these. And it'd be full-cost recovery for the city. and it would be full-cost recovery for the city. The caveat I put on this, and as we're working on how we would manage these things, is our needs come first. So, we don't send somebody there and shorten a shift. We don't short our special events. So, as long as ours are filled up, and we have no need for that person on their day off to come into work, then they can go ahead and work these. If, let's say, on a Sunday, there is an event, and we have somebody calling sick, and we have to call somebody in overtime, we'll cancel that special event down there, and they'll come in and work. So, that's how we manage this, to make sure the city doesn't lose anything or cost anything. And our cost recovery will be 100%. We won't run them at a loss like we currently do for in-city events. It'll be full-cost recovery. And those will be based on a set amount that will bill them for hours on invoice when we send them down there. So, we'll know what a cost of our person is, and that'll be the agreed-on reimbursement before we send them. I don't have an idea yet exactly how many events these would be. I don't anticipate there'll be a whole more... If there's a dozen a year we participate in, first year, I'd be kind of surprised. I don't see a whole bunch of these, and most of them would probably be on weekends, not on weekdays. So, I don't have a number yet, but it's something we're gonna keep close eye on because we're not gonna, again, degrade our ability to do what we need to do here to meet those. But on the other hand, it behooves us all to help each other out on events. Because we... even we're scraping the bottom of the manpower barrel for some of our events right now. We have one coming up, and I still have holes in there trying to fill with our folks. We have so many people out, so it's just very, very difficult.
And again, as a community, we know we get help from them, and we certainly want to be a partner with them as well. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I'll just say that I think the most important thing here that you've made sure that is insured is that our needs are being met first, that our needs are prioritized, and that we are getting 100% compensation for these things. I think those are the two most important things that make this a very agreeable agreement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7338?
Mayor, I will motion to approve Resolution Number 7338.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chief Shea, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 18, matters pertaining to the vacation of an easement on an existing residential property. Mr. Littrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Littrell, your Public Works Director, for the record. Item number 18 is matters pertaining to a vacation of a utility easement at 810 Avenue A. First item of business is a public hearing. Would you like me to discuss the item first, or do you want to do the public hearing first?
I prefer you discuss the item.
Currently, at 810 Avenue A, there is a 12-foot-wide sewer easement towards the rear of the lot. There is an additional 18-foot utility easement that's at the very rear of the lot. We have power running through the 18-foot easement. But the 12-foot sewer easement, there's no utilities in it right now. The sewer and water is actually out in Avenue A, so Public Works has no objections to this request. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. And again, because this is a public hearing, if you do have questions, you may ask those at this time. However, if you have comments or thoughts on the project, that should probably wait until after the public hearing. Any questions regarding specifics? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. So, just to clarify, this is only to ask for a vacation of the sewer easement, right? That we would be maintaining the utility easement, the electrical utility easement, correct?
Yes, the 18-foot easement will remain. If you're looking at the vacation map that was included in the packet, you'll see there's actually three easements on there. The one running from the front to the rear of the lot is a gas easement that's been previously vacated, and then the 12-foot easement is the one being requested to be vacated.
And then, you know, looking at this map, it looks as though these easements continue down Avenue A. And, you know, I used to live in that area, and I know there are buildings there. Do you know the history of these utility easements? Whether they've been previously vacated or in those areas? Or what... why historically they might be there versus if the sewage is in the street?
I haven't... still haven't been able to determine why it shows continuing down. I don't even know why it was there on this parcel to begin with. As far as I can tell, the sewer and the water has been out in Avenue A since it got originally built and installed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Okay, I'm not as well-spoken about easements, and was curious, because there is this easement up until now, A, was anyone ever compensated for that easement? Or is it something you buy the property to build, and you know where it is you're not supposed to build as a result of the easement? Could you just give me a 101, quick 101 description of the easement? Why there would be one, and what the restrictions are when someone has an easement like that?
A lot of times, when someone buys a parcel like this, they'll... if they do their due diligence, they'll see that there's a utility easement on there, sewer easement, gas easement. They're not allowed to construct over top of an easement. We'll allow, like, landscaping rock and stackable block walls sometimes, but nothing permanent. We don't want them to build a concrete slab or a building or anything over top of an easement because if there was sewer running back there and we ever had to get back there to fix it, we will tear up whatever we need to do to get to that easement, and then it's on the property owner to fix and replace whatever improvements they had there. For most easements, there's no compensation for it. It's just something, when you buy your property, it's there, and we have access to it.
Those are the rules.
Yep.
Okay. So, there's no compensation given in either direction for this easement? And once it's vacated, is that's permanent? Nobody comes in later and says, "Oh, by the way, now we're gonna do something with that"?
There would probably be some compensation if that were to be true. If I were making a mistake and went, "Oops, yeah, we were supposed to have sewer there", I would be trying to find another way to get sewer to that parcel instead of going in there and trying to... We would have to compensate them. We would essentially have to purchase a portion of that property.
And then the other 18 feet, there are utilities running through that space?
Yeah, currently, right now, there's overhead power.
Oh, overhead power?
Yep.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on specifics of this? All right, we will go ahead, then, and open the public hearing. This is for matters pertaining to the vacation of an easement on the existing residential property at 810 Avenue A. Is there anyone present that would like to speak with regard to this matter? All right, we will take any calls that anyone wishes to make. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments submitted for this public hearing?
No comments.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing for the vacation of an easement at 810 Avenue A. Anyone wishing to make public comment by call-in? Hearing no one for public comment, we will then close the public hearing. Any questions or comments, opinions regarding this matter from council? Anyone wishing to make a motion for Resolution 7339? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move to accept Resolution Number 7339.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Littrell, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number 18 for possible action, City Council appointments. First is the allotment committee. This is by draw. So, we have candidates that have put in applications for this?
That's correct. There were three ahead of the meeting, and then one additional has a handout. And we have two terms that expire June 30, 2022, and two, I mean, two terms that need to be appointed to June 30, 2022, and then two additional that would expire June 30, 2023.
So, let me get the math right. We have four positions, and we have four candidates?
Correct.
So, how should we determine which term each person receives?
I would say start with pulling two member names, and they would be appointed to terms expiring 2022, and then the remaining... remainder would be 2023.
Any objections to that process from council?
By draw, right, so...
Well, it could matter. Then I shall get the magic bowl. The first name is Rod Woodbury. The second name is Jacob Cody. The third name is Christian Clinton. And I suppose we know the fourth name, but I'll go ahead and read it. Thank you. And that will then conclude selections for the allotment committee. We will move to the Historic Preservation Committee, which is more of our normal way of having nominations from council. We have two positions for this as well. I will open the nominations by offering Charles Hauntz. Mr. Hauntz has been on the committee. He wishes to continue on the committee. He has had more than 20 years' membership in the Nevada Preservation Foundation. He is an engineer, a retired engineer, which is one of the skills that helped the city qualify for our certified local government status, the CLG status. That status can be important when we apply for grants to the State Historic Preservation Office. Again, I think Mr. Hauntz has done an outstanding job on the committee and would therefore place his nomination, his name in nomination. We have other applicants. Is there any other names that councilmembers wish to nominate? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Mr. Glenn Fain. I think Mr. Fain has shown an incredible amount of interest in our community. He comes to just about every meeting. He was coming to historic preservation meetings before he was appointed to that board. He's very knowledgeable with the interests about what is being discussed here at council, which I think is very important, as well as what is coming before them on the Historic Preservation Committee, of which he is currently a member. So, I would nominate him.
Thank you. Any other nominations for the Historic Preservation Committee?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Rod Woodbury.
Mr. Woodbury was previously appointed to the allotment committee just a few minutes ago, and I believe would be unable to serve on both committees.
Yes, city code states you can only serve on one member, I mean, on one board at a time. If he were appointed, I guess, he would have to make a decision on which board and then bring the other matter back at a future council meeting.
Again, since Mr... since Councilmember Fox has nominated him, then, I guess we'll put him in. We'll take the vote if he is one of the ones selected. We'll have to either redo something in the future or make some accommodation for that. Any other names for the Historic Preservation Committee? All right, we'll start with Mr. Hauntz. All those in favor of Mr. Hauntz being renamed to the committee, please raise your hand. That's five votes for Mr. Hauntz. All those in favor of reappointment of Mr. Fain, please raise your hand. That is three votes. That's a majority, so we would not then need to consider a vote for Mr. Woodbury. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That, then, will take care of item 19. We'll move to item 20, our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during final public comment? Will be limited to five minutes. As always, we ask speakers to be civil and concise in their comments.
Judy DeShane, I would hope that you will definitely take a look at that funding under Historic Preservation before it comes back to the budget. The $100,000 was not RDA money. It was actually budgeted money out of the general fund. And before we let anything like this go by again, because it was supposed to be strictly for Historic Preservation, not for dream kinds of things. This one should have been under RDA, and it wasn't. So, I am just urging you all to stop and look at this and make... get this squared away before we do our next budget, which is coming up within six months. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers that would like to speak during the final public comment period? All right, then, we will go to anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is the final public comment period for City Council meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during this period? Madam City Clerk, were there any comments that had been emailed in?
No comments.
Thank you. All right, hearing no others, then, we will close the final public comment period and move to our last item, 21, Council Reports. Councilmember Bridges?
The only report I have is the one I usually give at the end of the council meetings, which means that any Boulder City resident who is dealing with an emergency that is having problems with rent or utilities or need food, there is financing available, there's money available at emergency aid, both COVID-related and non-COVID-related. So, it's by appointment, so call. But nobody should be worried about being evicted or having the utility shut off as a result of an emergency in their life. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen? Councilmember Fox? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to speak with Phyllis and Fred Bakubar with Lindahand, and they let me know that Lindahand is in need of volunteers, particularly those who can help with transportation. That's a definite need, but they are always looking for volunteers, and you can reach them if you are interested in volunteering with Lindahand. The phone number- The phone number is 702-294-2363. So I just wanted to get that information out there in case there is anybody in the community who has the ability to, to help out, to lend a hand with Lynda Hand. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to say it again, even though the, the numbers now are improving, we are still seeing dozens of people die each day in Nevada from the COVID-19 virus. We are seeing thousands, excuse me, more than 1,000 people currently hospitalized. The Pfizer vaccine has received full FDA approval. There are solutions to this. Again, I encourage people, speak with your health care provider, get some accurate information. The chance of dying from the virus, if you're unvaccinated, I heard recently, was 11 times greater. I don't think that's worth the risk myself, but again, I encourage you to get some competent advice. I'd also like to thank Pastor Jason King with the Faith Christian Church, as well as the Boulder City Ministerial Association here in Boulder City for organizing an event this past Saturday to remember 9/11. Very somber day in America, and I think they did a program that showed a great deal of respect and honor for that particular day, so thanks to all of them. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.